I'd like to call the Marlboro School Committee to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I need ice, though.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation under God.
Under God.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will be joining us. He's tied up on another meeting, so we'll get going. So presentations, communications, superintendent's report.
Thank you. And before I start, just to let all of the public know who are watching, for the public participation portion of the meeting, members of the public may provide comment by emailing the superintendent at superintendent@mps.edu.org before 4:00 PM on the above date, or by dialing 774-243-0611. And then the conference ID is 731-961-830. Again, that phone number is 774-243-0611. Conference ID 731-961-830. If it pleases the Chair, I'd like to take my items out of order in my report.
Of course.
Thank you. I would like to congratulate all the past and present students on the AP Scholar List. The list was attached to the report that I gave you tonight. Many of the students graduated, but we wanted to share their accomplishments with the school committee. So please refer to the AP Scholar List at the end of the report. The MASs Superintendent's Award, so the Mass Association of School Superintendents, you know, I'm fortunate to be able to award two students with the Superintendent's Award this evening, although they can't be with us physically. I'm sure Mr. Riley and I will work to recognize the students at the school, but I wanted to share with you their accomplishments and their careers at the Marlboro Public Schools. First is Allison Trenn. Intelligent, inquisitive, and talented, Allison Trenn exemplifies all the qualities of a high academic achiever and positive role model for the student body at Marlboro High School. Since her freshman year, Allison has challenged herself with a rigorous course load of honors and AP classes, having earned all As with an overall GPA of 4.85 and is also ranked second in a senior class. Allison is an incredibly dedicated student who gives everything she has into her studies. Allison has earned the recognition of an AP Scholar with Honor, having earned a three or higher on four or more AP exams throughout her high school career. Allison has set her eyes on the top schools in the country. There's no doubt that she'll be wildly successful no matter where she ends up. Along with her academic achievements, Allison has been a four-year member of the Marlboro High School String Ensemble, a member of the National Honor Society, the National Art Honor Society, the TRIM Music Honor Society, and is involved with our Yearbook Committee. Allison has a bright future ahead of her, and we are so proud of all she has accomplished. Our second award is going to Amy Shanahan. Passionate, intelligent, self-motivated, and natural-born leader, Amy Shanahan exemplifies all of the qualities of a high academic achiever and positive role model for the student body at Marlboro High School. Since her freshman year, Amy has challenged herself with a rigorous course load of honors and AP classes, having earned all As with an overall GPA of 4.88 and is ranked first in her senior class. Amy takes her studies very seriously and has excelled in every aspect of her academic career here at Marlboro High School. Amy has also earned the recognition of AP Scholar with Distinction for earning a three or higher in five or more AP exams. Amy's innate ability to grasp concepts quickly and unbelievable work ethic will make her a worthy addition to any college or university she chooses to attend. Amy has a strong desire to attend medical school, and there's no doubt that she will achieve that goal. As if Amy's academic accolades weren't impressive enough, Amy has been a three-sport varsity athlete playing field hockey, basketball, and lacrosse, and currently serves as captain of the field hockey team. She's a member of the National Art Society, the National Art Honor Society, president of the Trivia Club, a peer mentor, and a member of the Student Leadership Committee. On top of all of that, she also holds two part-time jobs. We're very excited about what the future has in store for Amy and know that she will make the most out of every opportunity that college has to offer. So with the committee, I wish to obviously commend these two students. I'm very happy that I'm able to recognize them. And Mr. Riley and I will work on recognizing them in person as well so that they and their families can receive this honor. So thank you for allowing me to read through that.
Sure. May I just ask a question? Ordinarily, is this the award where you usually go to some sort of a luncheon with them?
No, the MASs Award is one usually we just do at school committee. In the past, there's also been a Worcester Roundtable. I'm not part of that Roundtable right now, so we aren't doing that award.
Okay.
But we are doing the NiOSC Award probably at the next school committee meeting.
Right. And I presume the luncheon scenario is off, but I was just gonna ask if there's some Zoom awards ceremony or something for that one.
Yeah, I'm hoping that if able, that Mr. Riley and I would be able to recognize these students maybe outside of the front of the high school
Yeah.
and maybe take a photo or two with them, and I can share that with the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. On November 3rd, we're gonna be holding our staff professional development, and there's no school on that day, remote or hybrid. We are delivering our PD electronically, and to free up all of our parking lots, I'm asking to have that be a virtual working day for teachers, paraeducators, behavior technicians, and other educational support personnel who are participating in their professional development activities. Principals, central office, custodians, office support will report as a normal workday. Part of the reason I'm asking for this is there is an anticipation that it's going to be a very busy day at the schools. I would like to free up all the parking that we can, and since we are already doing the PD over the computer, it makes sense to me to allow employees to do that from their home for that day. So I don't know if the school committee had any comments or concerns about that. Otherwise, we will move forward and plan that PD day as such.
My only comment was, I'm really glad you're doing that. Twofold, because I think not only does that allow for members of our community to have complete access to parking and making it available, even though I'm gonna encourage everyone to get out to early vote, but I think also for all of our staff who may not live in Marlboro, it allows them a hair more flexibility as well for once their PD is done, they're gonna be right there in their own community. So if they weren't able to vote prior to getting on PD, they can get right there and be a part of something that's important in addition to the PD. So, thank you.
Yep, agreed.
Thank you. I'd like to give a, at the last meeting, you asked for a staffing update. So I did want to address the current staffing. This was made as of last Wednesday. We have filled a couple of these positions, but I'll give the update as it was written. So we had 22 open positions. We had four teaching positions. Two were resignations the week that I made the report, and two were new positions that we added for our remote learning teams. We need three behavior techs, and then, as you can see, one at Good Now, one at JARK, one at Whitcomb. We're looking for five paraeducators. One EL para at the JARK School, one EL para at the Richer School, two special education paras at the Kane School, and one special education para at the JARK School. We are looking for four custodians and three custodian helpers right now. The, just for the committee's knowledge, the custodial helpers are currently being filled by a contractor. So we have folks on-site every day performing our cleaning. Mr. Diaz had a company that he reached out to through the state bid list. So those are currently filled positions. We are looking for the four custodian positions, though. We're also looking for five long-term substitutes and a hall monitor at MHS. We are recruiting remote substitutes and building substitutes every day. I'm sure as you've driven by the schools, you've seen our lawn signs to help with the recruitment effort, and we actually did see an uptick in calls for positions after we put those out, so we were happy to see that. And just some data for the school committee to consider. In August, September, and October alone, we filled 77 positions. I'm sorry, that should also, that's 77 positions. By way of comparison, we filled five positions in the year before. So it has been a considerable HR job to be able to stay on top of all these openings, get people filled and hired, and do this on a daily basis. We are working towards that. I just wanna thank Patty Brown, Sandra Landry, and Mary Kilburn for their tireless work to support this effort and help the schools each day. They have truly gone above and beyond, and they're working on the weekends. They're working all night. They are really trying hard to make sure that every single one of these positions is filled. So I just wanna give them the appropriate shout-out and let them know that we really appreciate their efforts. Any questions before I move back to the front of report?
Nope. Oh, Mrs. Hennessy, sorry.
Thank you. The only piece, I guess I would say, from a clarity standpoint is that some of these positions, if I am guessing, a little bit of assumption, has been created by some of the changes that have had to go into place, whether it's been hybrid or remote, and needing to adapt to the numbers of students that have needed to maneuver, as well as then some of the staff needs, if that's correct?
Absolutely. And like I started off by saying, the four teaching positions, two of them were resignations that week. Two of them we added for remote learning.
Right.
Because when we saw certain class sizes that we didn't think were acceptable, we went to add teaching positions to those classrooms so we could lower that class size.
Right.
And that's been something that as we continue to see folks moving in that direction, we're trying to manage that as best we can. And in this case, it was adding two positions, just in that emergency basis, trying to make sure we could handle it.
Thank you. But that just speaks to exactly why there were dates that we were trying to meet on getting the exact information so that you all could then adapt the staff appropriately to meet class size needs and make sure that we were trying to satisfy all of the needs across the district, which, as we all know, is right now continuing to change in front of us. But thank you for giving us an update. I would say that, not that I would expect that every meeting we would get that, but it probably would be helpful to have an update maybe every other.
Every month, yeah.
Every month, just since we are needing to react quite quickly with a lot of fluctuations, it might be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, back to the top?
Okay. Thank you. So I wanted to give a report on our fall 2020 COVID data. Again, I gave the links for the school committee to check the COVID dashboard. And I just wanted to go over some of the numbers and figures that we are seeing within the city. Since this report came out, we have added more cases. So when I sent this report to the school committee on Thursday, we had a total positive of seven cases in the schools. As of Monday, we were at 18 cases in the schools with more contacts at each of the school districts, including Good Now, which had six additional cases over that time. One of the reasons that MPS has a higher share of contacts being quarantined, we're using a stricter level for close contact. So if a student is in a classroom, and they're in the classroom all day with the teacher and with the other students, we're considering the classroom to be a close contact for purposes of quarantining. Two of the, you know, some of the students that we have put on the list are fully remote, and they're not in school. That's not the case for every single student. But I also wanted to point out that the number of current active cases in the city also increased during that period of time. So right now, whereas the chart I gave the school committee said that there were eight active cases in the school ages of 5 to 19, there is currently 24 cases. And the percent share of total cases went from 13% to 30% over that time. Additionally, I gave the school committee information on the number of staff who were positive or quarantined, and since that time, we have had two additional staff members who have tested positive. Part of the reason, again, for the high numbers of quarantine, especially from the report that I showed you at Whitcomb, was that we had quarantined an entire team, which included four teachers plus the specialists who might be in and out of the classrooms. So as we are quarantining, we are gonna see a higher number of folks. So I did say that if there are any updates over the long weekend pertinent to the data, I would provide it in person on the 13th. And at this time, I am asking the school committee to consider my recommendation to move to remote on Monday, October 19th, in part because of the public health data that I've been watching, specifically the number of cases per 100,000 residents over the past four weeks. And I'm counting tomorrow as part of that because we do know tomorrow's map is going to be red. In addition, there's going to be an increase of cases. So watching that data, this is exactly what we've been designated and told to do, is that don't make data on a, don't make a decision on a single point of data, but look at several sources of data and look at it over a trend of multiple weeks. So what I've seen is that over the past four weeks, the community-level data has basically gotten worse every single week. We've gone from eight to 10 to 12. I believe tomorrow's report could be upwards of 16 per 100,000 residents. Prior to this meeting, I was, I called in and was a guest at the Board of Health meeting, and Mr. Garsside invited me to that meeting to speak to the Board of Health about my recommendation to you tonight. And the Board of Health did vote to support that recommendation. So while I know this is disappointing, it's frustrating for all of us, in my mind, it is the right thing to do.
So, I, two questions. One is, do we know, so the numbers that are gonna come out tomorrow, I mean, the trend in previous weeks and in the data that you gave us in the packet really shows that kind of the 20 to 39 two cohorts of ages was where the bulk of the cases are in the city?
Previously, yes. And what we've seen recently is that has moved to the age ranges of 5 to 19.
Five to 19, oh, it's gone up?
Correct.
So the number of cases in the younger ages has gone up?
Yes. So on the report that I had given to school committee, we had a case count of eight
Correct.
in the 5 to 19.
Yep.
And I believe Mr. Garsside's information that he provided me today, that we are at 24 currently, and that the share of cases in the city is 30% as opposed to 13%.
Got it. And then the information that you provided us today, the update, the way it was presented in terms of the positive cases and then the contacts, is that where you're saying that those, the number of contacts isn't, is, is that we're quarantining full teams?
Correct. So what the data will show is the top level will be the positive cases.
Yep.
The bottom level will be the cases that are currently quarantined. Those are not positive students. Those are students who were in contact with a positive student, almost exclusively being in the same classroom.
Okay. Do we have, are we getting a sense? So, so we knew that people were gonna get this, but is there any way to look at the contact tracing that's going on to know if kids are catching it at school?
We haven't seen student-to-student transmission. That hasn't been something that we've seen in our numbers. What we have, what we have been experiencing is entire families.
Yeah.
So siblings will get it, so a brother and a sister over multiple grade levels. We haven't seen student-to-student transmission as being problematic. In fact, what we've been seeing is the rise in the number of cases seems to be tied to households.
Okay.
So what's happening in our eyes, at least in my eyes as I'm looking at the data and I'm seeing it, is that you're getting two or three cases per household, and each student is getting it in that household, which is over multiple grade levels.
Which makes sense. I mean, that's close quarters, and it's hard to socially distance when you're living together. Because when you, when you look at the data and it says there are three positive cases at Whitcomb, but 26 contacts, there's no data to suggest that any of those 26 contacts
No.
have had it, or have caught it.
And that's a good point to bring up, and I do wanna at least say that we previously had asked the gold team at Whitcomb to be quarantined.
Yes.
And what we did see is that there were no additional cases from that quarantine.
Right.
That worked the way we wanted it to. The protocols worked. It was certainly exactly how we had laid it out. One of the issues that we have, though, is with the multiple quarantines, it does become difficult to run school. So if we had two teams out in a grade, I would not at Whitcomb be able to run the grade. We don't have enough employees to be able to fill in across all of those teams and actually run school if we had to quarantine two teams at a time.
Got it. Right. So is the recommendation that you're making that we go to fully remote for a period of time or indefinite, like what's?
I think what we learned from the last time is putting a period of time on it may not be the best decision because the public health data can certainly swing.
Yep.
And there might be an opportunity for us to return to school faster than we had put in a period of time. And I think that also raised some anxiety about having a period of time on it when we did previously ask the high school to go remote, and we brought it back partly because we had seen all the cases recover, and we were ready to resume school. So I'm not asking for a period of time to be placed on that right now. I do believe that we do have to watch the public health data and make a decision based on that. In making this recommendation, I'm also recommending that we have our special education programs that are considered high-needs, which would be our pathways and connections to students, that they would continue to be in school as we did when Marlboro High School went remote for that period of time. Additionally, that the high school, there is a high school dropout prevention program, METAS, that is, also would be in-school in-person. Very small cohort of students, and they meet at night on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Any other, Mrs. Hennessy, oh, I'm sorry. Do you wanna take over? You're back.
Sure. Mrs. Hennessy.
Thank you. So for clarity, first and second graders that have been previously full in would go fully remote?
Yes.
Okay. Same thing as far as kindergartners, obviously, they had been A and PM, but we're pulling them all back as well?
Correct.
Okay. The numbers that we have gotten that are relative to the positive cases, clarity, that's, those are numbers that are given to us by the Board of Health or identified through our nurses within our system?
We always confirm with the Board of Health. So what has happened is, I think that there's very good relationships between parents, teachers, and sometimes the parent will let the teacher know before we are notified by the Board of Health. Before that information can even get to the Board of Health, we're being notified that the child may be positive, and then we're following up by confirming it with the Board of Health. But there is a, there's data that is shared on a daily basis with Board of Health regarding positive cases.
Okay. And then as far as normal process with contact tracing, asking for clarity. So we have been doing on our end, say, you know, Johnny comes into my classroom, right? And the 10 people that are in there would be considered to be part of that contact tracing group that would be quarantined because they were in for a period of time with that student, correct?
So what we do in the school department is we give all of that information to the Board of Health as part of the contact tracing effort. So that way, they already have, so that they don't have to replicate efforts within the school system by calling us and saying, what classroom are they in? Who are they around? We prepare that, and we send it to the Board of Health already in the file format they need.
Okay. So, normal protocol would be a 14-day quarantine period? Or at home?
Yes.
Just for clarity, so?
From the time of the
Exposure?
be together, at the exposure, because one student may be out for a period of time and then test positive after they've been out for a period of time. So we go back to the period of when there was exposure.
Exposure. Okay, thank you. Again, that's, I just feel like I've had a number of community members reaching out to me, and I think I know the process, but I'm not so sure. So it'd be a lot easier to make sure it's communicated again because it's gonna come up again and again. So is it possible for those students, then, to move forward on having a COVID test, to test and see where they stand? Would that potentially allow for any reduction in quarantine timeframe if they come back negative? Or no, at that point, it is still that set time period that the Board of Health has asked us to work with?
It's still a set period of time.
Okay. Agreed. I just, again, I think it's, there are a lot of different steps in this process, and we're all just trying to adapt and move as best as we can with it. And I think that that's been a concern that I feel like I've been hearing from a lot of family members where their students have been affected because of the close contact, and they've needed to be out of school, even if they haven't had signs, symptoms, and/or have tested negative, is working within that stress of wanting to then be back a part of their cohort and not being able to. I do think that that, in some respects, allows for us to address some things of normalcy if we move to a fully remote because everyone would be having to have that experience. Again, I go back to a lot of personal responsibility that our community really needs to step up and, you know, be making a very diligent effort of trying to wash our hands, staying away from people, staying socially distant, wearing your mask, because obviously somewhere, somehow, things aren't happening correctly, which is a concern. And I think all of us want to have the students in school, if at all possible. So I'm sad to, you know, I'm sad to hear the rise of the numbers. It's definitely not where I wanted to be at this point. But I also do not wanna see our numbers continuing to rise if there's somewhere that we can be helping on curbing interaction. So I, at that point, I would also ask for clarity that I'm assuming that we'd have to make changes within our athletics that are going on? Or does that now become another conversation piece to happen here at the school committee level? Because I know that fully remote had been a trigger, if I understand correctly, around extra or co-curricular activities. So I'm curious about your thoughts.
So my recommendation for fully remote, starting on Monday, the 19th, would also include a stay on athletics and extracurriculars. I think my recommendation is based on the caution that I'm asking to take. And I think if we're having athletics, I think it sends the wrong message. To me, that's my opinion. I don't think that closing the schools out of concern of the rising case numbers, we can then go as normal with athletics at the high school level. So I would be asking on the 19th for also to have athletics paused at the same time.
So one other question, if I may address the Chair.
Sure.
Just curious, do we have free testing facilities still in this area of the state at this time? I have to say, I'm not even sure where things stand with that.
It's been extended several times. We have three locations in the city that people can go and drive our facility down at New England Sports Center. It's run through the hospital. We also have by appointment only at
Carwell?
Former Doctor's Express. Former Doctor's Express. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I forget which one, but the one next to the 99.
So that's appointment only. And there are a few weeks at this point, or last I heard. And then we do have a mobile van that comes down from Worcester three or four times a week. But all those locations and times for testing are on the city's health department website.
Thank you.
And it's all free testing.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarity.
Well, just to clarify, because it's extended through the 31st of October for now? Or is it going to be indefinite? Yeah.
Other questions for the committee? Other questions from the committee? I just want to clarify, not even clarify, make a couple of statements that I was on the call with the superintendent. He had to leave to go to the executive session. I stayed on, and that's the one I just got off. They just finished up. But we do have to do a better job in the city. HR sent out a reminder to all the departments today to remind them that this is not done. And we have to be vigilant for our employees in the city. But I think we've seen that it's not a city of Marlboro issue any longer, that communities from all over are turning red. And we're going to see more of that. The Dr. Tennyson that's on our Board of Health was just mentioning on that call that he doesn't anticipate numbers go down for a while because we're going to start confusing the flu with COVID. So it's going to be a tough winter season. I hate to say it, but this is going to be with us for the next nine months until the vaccine is on the street and people are taking it. But it's going to be a long process. It's been very frustrating, and our employees have been great. Our administrators have been doing a fantastic job. You know, I know Mike's pretty frustrated. We had conversations earlier today, and I was not happy. You know, why can't we do a couple of schools and not all the schools? And but the argument is because when we do a couple of schools, there's going to be more parents opting for remote. So every day, every week, we're going to be changing which teachers are doing what. And that becomes very confusing. It's just, it's been very, very frustrating. And as he said, we have families that are breaking out in two and three and four at a time. Fortunately, we haven't had any additional issues in our nursing homes or assisted living facilities. Right now, citywide, we have one case, so that's good. They've been doing a real good job and staying on top of it. And the younger people, you know, the numbers have dropped substantially. We're below 30 for the average age now. And granted, they're getting better. They're turning it around a lot quicker because they're a lot healthier. But there are some that still have some health issues that need to be dealt with. So I'm hoping, crossing my fingers, that things get better. But, you know, we've seen it happen in South Row and Hudson, and the numbers doubled throughout the state. And I could see the same thing happening tomorrow when they come out with the new map. But I don't see this changing anytime soon, so.
Can I?
Yep.
How are things going at the hospital?
The hospital is great.
So are the numbers?
They've been anywhere between zero and three cases up there at a time. As of now, they have, I believe, no cases in the hospital as of today.
So the people are getting sick, but not so sick that they need hospitalization?
Not in there on ventilators, they're under intensive care. So it's a different, it's different than it was six months ago. Where every time I was calling up there, I was on their weekly call, and it was awful. So, you know, that part's been great. Hospitals open for business. Go up and have your surgeries. They need the business up there. No, it's just, they've done a great job in keeping everyone safe up there. And they had some people that had caught it along the way, and they've gotten better. So they're in real good shape. But district-wise for the UMass system, I believe there's one in our group now. Only one in the, between Alliance and Lamonster and Marlboro.
Only one case?
Only one case. That's the information I was given today. Anything else? Any other questions from the committee? Mrs. Hennessy?
Thank you. Obviously, we're digesting this information at this point. I'm really concerned, I mean, concerned overall, but I'm really concerned about the socio-emotional aspect of our students. And I think you all have done a fabulous job of trying to wrap your arms around the situation to address those academic needs. But if we're looking at this needing to extend further and further, I really think, just like we've tried to address through the food, that has been one of the ways that we've been able to reach out to the community. I feel like we really are going to have to find a way to find ways of social interaction in a different way to help our student body. And I don't know what that is, and I'm not, I'm not trying to say, do it this way. But I really feel like we need to figure something out as ways of creating, whether it's, I don't know, like Zoom rooms or something so that some, some of these students have ways of connecting. Because that really does concern me a lot. And I think we're kidding ourselves if we, they aren't going to go find each other some other way if we don't create other opportunities for them in a healthy way. And I think that that's where, like, my head's spinning a little bit, you know? I just feel like in, in thinking about some of our, our music kids, our drama kids that have not been able to necessarily do something together for so long, that makes them that whole child that we've talked about, you know, that Marlboro is. Same thing with our kids that are heavily involved with athletics or political activism groups and things like that. So while I know that our job is academic and education, I go back to considering the whole child that we've already said Marlboro is. And I feel like we're going to have to work really hard to come up with some ways of supporting and connecting these kids. Because otherwise, they're going to get together on the field somewhere and get chased off by the police because they shouldn't be there. Or they're going to, you know, try and, you know, jam together because they need to go play their instruments. And I guess I, I feel like I don't want to leave it as a whatever. I feel like we need to have some form of an action item of making it something that we want to do so we establish ways of trying to support them. And that's not meaning an answer right now, but I couldn't imagine how I would feel if I was, you know, 16, 17 years old and I'm once again kind of curbed into, I can't do X. And kind of with an unknown timeframe. I think as adults, we're going stir crazy, but yet we can kind of walk our way through it. Where I think unfortunately, I don't think that necessarily all of our students have that ability right now. And sometimes our students don't have that support system necessarily at home to help them either. So, so that's it.
No, it's, it's very frustrating because you don't know, are we better off? You know, I mentioned to the superintendent, I'd rather see them in school, even though we have some cases, than possibly hanging out with one another, you know, for a couple of hours a day. Their parents are going to work. In some cases, when they're 14, 15, 16, 17 years old, no one's there. So five or six of them are getting together. Are they better off outside playing in games or basketball or soccer or whatever it is? And this discussion takes place every day, every couple of days as to what to do. Halloween, we're trying to figure that one out. You know, like the governor said, they're better off outside than they are inside at a party. So we're trying to figure out how to do that as safely as possible. And it's, it's been very frustrating because this, this virus has everyone stumped a little bit, so. What else? Anything else from any committee members? Does anyone else want to be heard? Anyone else want to be heard? I entertain a motion.
Motion to accept a recommendation by the superintendent on going remote Monday, October 19th.
Motion made in seconded to move the recommendation of the superintendent. Any further discussion from anybody? Seeing none. Mr. Gary?
He's not here.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
You're home anyway. You're taking care of yourself. She's not happy tonight. Mrs. Bodenhandja?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, this is approved. And I can tell you, I know it wasn't an easy vote for any of you. The kids belong in school, and it's going to be a continued conversation, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an update for the committee tonight on finance and operations. Food services, just a reminder to the community that a meal is now included with your Marlboro education. Similar to transportation and athletics, you now get a meal at school. We want to encourage all families to participate in the food service program. Students doing remote work have access to the school meal program from one of 16 community-wide pickup locations right now. In preparation for the vote that just took place, we are already taking steps to significantly widen that distribution starting next week, since we won't be using most of the buses for transportation of students. So more to come on that, but those preparations are already in place.
Are you thinking that it's going to go back to the way it was, that they're going to drive out to the?
Correct. Yes. So more information from that will be coming to the committee as well as to families in the next couple of days. But I really want to encourage our families to participate. Despite COVID-19 serving restrictions, our food service employees have worked very hard to develop exciting and nutritious menus for in-person and remote learners. So we'll be honoring their hard work to participate in the food service program. Speaking of transportation, we want to thank the community for their patience in navigating certain transportation challenges during the first few weeks of school. We've been able to implement nearly 500 transportation change requests since the first day, and we still have a couple of requests that are pending. We encourage all families to reach out with questions and feedback about the transportation program. You can do so by emailing transportation@mps-edu.org. We, our primary goal is to, as we come back eventually with students, is to continue improving the customer service aspect of transportation for students, and we need families' feedback in order for us to continue working towards that. PPE distribution and inventory management, just wanted to speak a little bit about what we've done in regards to PPE. We continue to be very well supplied. Our original PPE distribution model involved stocking individual spaces in the schools, such as classrooms and offices, and then refilling those supplies from a centralized location within those schools. We then resupply the schools themselves from a district-wide location, from which we can easily manage the inventory levels and reorder as needed. This has proved to be an effective model, and we are happy to say we haven't run out of anything, and I don't expect that we will. HVAC updates, the facilities department has worked very hard to implement all of the recommendations from the HVAC consultant. A substantial amount of work was completed in a short period of time, and we're grateful for their efforts. The HVAC reports have been shared with our staff. They're available on our website online. And I also included the reports as an attachment to this update tonight. Happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Questions from the committee? Mrs. Hennessy?
Thank you very much. I do appreciate having the HVAC materials available, not only to us, but publicly. And will there be some continuing things? It looked to me, when I looked at the last update, that there were still some things that were going to continue to be worked on. Am I reading that correctly?
You are absolutely. The work with the consultant is ongoing. Over the next few months, we just wanted to make sure, one, that we end up finishing 100% of the work.
Yeah.
And two, that we make sure that the tweaks that we've made does not get impacted as the temperature continues to change. So that follow-up will be continued.
And that's exactly what was my next question, was going to be around the, the temperature changes and things like that. So they'll be continuing to work through. And again, then you'll be updating us as more work continues along.
Absolutely. As the reports are updated, I release them to the committee as well as the staff.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Seeing none.
Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you. MCAS update. On September 29th, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education released an update to districts on MCAS testing. We are still awaiting clarification on the requirements and options for students in grades 11 and 12 because on the schedule, a number of those sessions were labeled optional. But we do have some dates. The high school testing windows has been identified as January 14th to February 5th and May 18th to May 27th. Grade 10 students are required to participate in the May testing session, but the high school will need to identify the date juniors will be assessed. Although the tests are all computer-based, different sessions will be assessing legacy and next-gen standards. So we're going to have to identify for, it's a mixture of different standards on different dates. So we're going to have to identify the most appropriate session for the juniors, once we have more information. Also, although no specific dates were provided, districts were also notified that schools should plan for spring 2021 MCAS testing in grades three through eight to occur as usual in April and May. NWA MAP growth testing. Students in grades one through 11 have been participating in MAP assessments over the last two weeks. These assessments will continue throughout the month of October. Remote class schedules may need to be adjusted in order to allow for small group remote testing. Students will be assessed in October, December, and March. Kindergarten students will also be assessed during the second and third round of testing. Our baseline data will be used to identify any gaps into planned curriculum adjustments this fall to address those gaps. MAP assessments are scheduled throughout the year to measure student growth and to identify students in need of intervention such as after-school tutoring sessions. It is our plan to implement remote extended day tutoring programs across all levels. And just so everyone's clear, I met with Mr. Riley earlier this afternoon, and we are still on track, regardless of what model we're in, to complete the MAP assessments for all students at the high school.
Questions from the committee?
Just the usual. We have a lot of acronyms. Could you just spell them out for me?
So we know about MCAS, yes.
That one I unfortunately know about.
So NWEA is Northwest Evaluation Association, and MAP is the Measure of Academic Progress. So it is the measurement that we all want to have throughout the year to make sure what our baseline is and how much our students are progressing over the year and then from year to year.
Mrs. Bodenhandja?
So are we administering MAP? How are we, how is it working when kids are remote? They just sit at their computer at home and take the test?
And, yes, and there's some advantages because you really don't need the headphones and the microphones if you're doing it at home. So it's, it's easier. But since you have to proctor, you have to make sure your groups are a little bit smaller because the proctors need to see all the students at the same time. But they also can see their progress through the software as well. So we're very fortunate. We did a lot of this training at the beginning of the year. Whitcomb did it all early so that we could all take their lead, and all the 100% remote students. and all the 100% remote students and anyone that is remote will be able to continue with this assessment.
Are we getting any guidance from DSC about, I mean, there are plenty of districts that are fully remote. And by the time MCAS rolls around, there's going to be a lot more districts that are fully remote. Are they going to allow MCAS to be administered remotely?
I think he said...
Every time that we ask questions, we get the answer, and it's the standard answer, and then it ends with "at this time." So, you know, I'd love to be able to give like, this is what we're saying, and this is what we're doing. To be honest with you, we're waiting for the snow day information first. Because that's going to be more important immediately than what MCAS after January. So we're waiting for additional guidance on that.
So they're basically saying, prepare that it's going to happen based on what we have for information at this time.
Some things will not change. There are some scholarships that are associated with MCAS. So that would be, it would be to our benefit to identify students that maybe could take that MCAS early and qualify for that scholarship. If they do have alternative pathways, it may be that you have either taken MCAS or you have determined, you could show your proficiency in another way. But MCAS is always going to be one of those ways that a student could benefit and earn a diploma. So we're going to have to look at the options and make sure that we have discussions with students and families to pick the best options for everyone.
Any other questions from the committee, Mrs. Hennessy?
Thank you. So, love hearing that with the MAP testing, that it can be administered remotely, as well as you can see things going on right as it's happening. That sounds fantastic, because then we have no holdup.
We don't?
So, great news on that. It would be really interesting, once you guys get, you know, your first round of data and have been able to review it, for us to get an idea of where that's sitting too. MCAS update, thank you for your information. I'm irritated beyond belief, and frankly, I, I'm ready to write DSC myself. I'm just irritated because...
We're going to vote on a resolution.
Yeah, well, I'm just beyond, because I just feel like they're, not only are they, they're just holding us all hostage right now. Like, you have to make a decision, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but you guys can't say it, I am going to. I'm irritated beyond belief, because this is putting handcuffs across the district and across all of the students, as well as the parents, that they can't make up a decision, and they can't make up their minds. This is absolutely insane. And I will say, it's insane that the federal government has not done their job either, because it's the trickle-down effect, because the states won't take any responsibility on this after the feds haven't either. So I'm beyond unhappy, because this is putting all of us in a horrible position above and beyond what we're having to deal with anyway. And there's already so much pressure on every single member of any kind of school district, that this is unbelievable. So, you know, I want to write somebody, if somebody wants to join with me, please feel free. But I'm done trying to be quiet, sitting there and waiting for them to actually get some sense in their head to stop it with this pressure. So, there.
Any other questions from the committee? Thank you very much. Entertained a motion on the minutes of September 22nd and October 2nd.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of September 22nd, 2020, and the special meeting of October 2nd, 2020. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gary's absent, Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Bodenhendinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
The chair votes yes, they are approved. Public participation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the public participation portion of this meeting, members of the public may provide comment by dialing 774-243-0611. Conference ID 731-961-830. Again, that phone number is 774-243-0611. Conference ID 731-961-830. And again, public participation is your opportunity to comment to the school committee. It is not a question-and-answer session, but if you would like to call in and offer a comment to the school committee, you can do so by dialing 774-243-0611. And the conference ID is 731-961-830.
Is there any public participation?
I don't see any callers at the moment, Mr. Mayor.
Any public participation? Any public participation? Seeing none. MASC delegate, can I entertain a motion?
Move to designate Mrs. Matthews as... She's always, she's been the last few years. Mrs. Matthews to be delegate to the delegate assembly at the virtual MASC delegate assembly on November 7th.
Seconded, any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Gary's absent, Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Bodenhendinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
The chair votes yes, you are appointed.
We need to appoint a backup.
Okay.
Runner-up, what do we call it? Alternate. I can't, I'm not going to make my...
I nominate Mrs. Bodenhendinger, if she's available.
I thought you weren't going to be, you're not going to be there?
No, I can, I'll be the, I'm going to be on the call, sure.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Mrs. Bodenhendinger as the alternate. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Gary's absent, Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Bodenhendinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
The chair votes yes, you are designated as the alternate. Congratulations. It's resolution season.
It is resolution season.
My God.
Mrs. Matthews, do you want to read them? I mean, the good thing is that two of them we've already done, right? So resolutions... Two and three, correct? Yeah, two and three, we previously voted on as a committee. So we don't have to read through all that kind of stuff, we can just...
I can read them, that's fine, if you want me to.
Sure.
I won't, I'll read the "whereas and therefore be it resolved."
Right.
That's it. Resolution one, MCAS and high-stakes testing. Therefore be it resolved that MASC rejects the cause for the students of 2022 who missed their 10th grade MCAS testing to be required to make it up during the 2020-2021 school year forever. We demand those students be held harmless for not taking the MCAS and that their graduation requirements shall be determined by locally-controlled voices of the school committee and school administration within the remaining graduation requirements of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Additionally, we reiterate our call for a moratorium on all high-stakes testing for the 2020-2021 school year, so all students can benefit from their time being focused on direct instruction, and we urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on high-stakes testing of three years.
Mrs. Hennessy.
Let me vote a resounding yes on this one, but I would also like to suggest a friendly amendment, that it would also include the graduating class of 2023. Because I think everybody's a little insane if they really think that by May, we're all going to be sitting down taking MCAS with this sophomore class, too. So that would be my amendment, is that we add in requesting that the class of 2023 as well. Get to miss MCAS and change graduation requirements in the whole nine yards, too.
Motion made and seconded to approve with the amendment. Any further discussion, Mrs. Matthews?
Mrs. Hennessy, I believe that the last line, the enact a moratorium of high-stakes testing of three years would include through the class of 2024. Because if I remember correctly, in this conversation, I forget where it was, but it's nine through 12 would not be impacted by high-stakes testing.
Okay, as long as it's... As long as it's...
I will ask for clarification.
Yeah. If you can, if you can ask for clarification, that would be fine. My, as I think you've kind of gotten a hint, until we are out of this, they need to rescind all of this. I'm over it, so... And I'll be there online with you if you really want to call on me, and I'll jump right to your defense.
Unfortunately, you're not allowed.
I know, but anyway.
You'll be there for moral support.
Thank you.
So on the motion to approve as amended if needed. Mr. Gary's absent, Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Bodenhendinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso.
Waited a long time to say this, yes.
And the chair is abstaining, so... Not getting into these. With that, it is approved. And you said two and three we took care of.
Two...
Number two, COVID-19 state funding.
One second. So we already took a vote on this. We were asked to do the big, let's support more money.
I believe it was the July 14th meeting, Mr. Mayor.
So you, we're in support of it, you have the vote?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we have to do it again, because they are... What we voted on is what wound up becoming the resolution, so we've already voted both of those in the affirmative.
Number two and number three have been voted on prior.
You got yes on both.
Correct, so I'm bringing a vote of yes again, even though they were voted.
Right.
Okay. Number four. Lowering the voting age for municipal elections. Therefore be it resolved that the sponsors call upon the Massachusetts legislature to pass the Empower Act and make other means necessary to allow cities and towns to establish a minimum voting age of 16 years for all municipal elections.
Mrs. Hennessy.
I'd make a motion to say yes, agree with it.
Motion made and seconded to approve, any discussion? None.
I'm, I'm, I'll be honest, I am mixed on this. At first, I thought, why on earth are we getting involved in this? However, it, at an MASC board meeting, we talked about this one a lot, and... I see the value in it, I see the, so my question wasn't whether I thought it was a good thing to do this or not. My issue was whether or not we as school committees should be voting on this. That was my question. The point that the people in the affirmative were making is that as educational leaders who are making decisions on behalf of students, that the students, it makes sense for students to have a right to elect those people that are representing them. And because students are who we are advocating on behalf of, so I see the point.
The only point I see is, the political process should be in the forefront of our education system. And we had a superintendent, not our current superintendent, not our former superintendent, a couple superintendents ago, that completely eliminated it from the school system. So I would support getting it back in the school system and start educating kids on the entire process of...
Oh, you mean...
Elections and civics and everything else. And make it a forefront education process.
Which we did pass, the state did pass that, it is part of law, the law now.
It needs to be a primary course.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And that's actually where I was coming from, was honestly, because I feel like it's our right, but you need to start somewhere to start really having a voice and learning. And I think of, you know, Ms. Weldon, that was actively involved in making sure that every single person that went through her classroom in eighth grade, you know, you learned it. So I think it's a great opportunity to start somewhere, so I love it.
Any other comments, questions? Mrs. Matthews.
My only comment would be that I can see both sides of it. I think it's important that we, that the students are being taught the civic responsibility and the importance of voting. Ms. Bodenhendinger, I agree, I'm not quite sure why it would come from us, rather than coming through education leaders, which we're not education leaders, so...
Yes, we are.
But...
We absolutely are. Well, it actually is, so if you read the, I don't know what number whereas it is, but Rep. Andy Vargas and Harriet Chandler have the Empower Act. This is an act that's before the legislature. What this, they're not just coming up with this out of left field. This is something that's already being talked about in the legislature. So this is...
I just, at times, I don't necessarily, and I'm sure as parents, we can all say this, that there's times a 16-year-old would not be what we would want voting necessarily. So, but... I would like to see more active voting. And I know that our city has been good about reaching out to the kids and going into the schools and making sure that they're registering to vote and becoming more active, so that's my comment on that.
And just to add to this, though, this is very clear that this is just for municipal elections. This is not for state elections or federal elections, it's only for local elections. So basically, 16-year-olds would have the right to vote for school committee, mayor, city council, that's all.
Thank you for the clarification.
The ones that actually do the job, as opposed to the ones in the state and the federal government that kind of take a ride. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Gary's absent, Mrs. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
I vote no.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Did I skip Mrs. Bodenhendinger?
You did, that's okay. Doesn't have to be in order.
Mrs. Bodenhendinger?
Yes.
And the chair abstains, it is approved. Number five.
One second, sorry. Taking notes at the same time. Number five, resolution number five, supporting increased federal support and stimulus funding for public K through 12 education. Oh, well, that's a long one. Therefore be it resolved that MASC aligns with state superintendents of schools and urge the Massachusetts congressional delegation and state legislators to advocate for and approve additional education funding for our nation's public schools through the enactment of progressive tax legislation.
Good luck. Can't we just concentrate on educating our kids? Is there any motion? No motion, number six.
I'm going to make a motion against.
Why are you making a motion? You don't have to make a motion.
I'm entertaining against supporting it.
What's that?
Against. She's making a motion to vote not in favor of this.
Motion to not support the resolution number five. Any further discussion on that? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gary's absent. This is to support not supporting the resolution.
Yeah.
Ms. Hennessy.
Voting yes against this resolution.
This is Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Boden Henninger?
No.
Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
No.
And the chair abstains, it does not pass, it is appro, it's approved to say no. Resolution six.
Retention of Medicaid revenue. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC urges the general court to require that 100% of Medicaid reimbursements to cities and towns be provided in full amount to the public schools of each municipality through a school district revolving account to underwrite the cost of providing an adequate education.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you allowing me to discuss this. I may be the only superintendent in the state to say this, but I don't support this resolution. The reason I do not support this resolution is because the city of Marlboro affords us 145% of our net school spending. The Medicaid revenue that is given to the city is for services that are already rendered. So while I understand that there's some school districts who believe that they should be receiving this revenue, I would tell you, we have already received it, and it's in the general fund. The city has been very generous with us. I do not think, and, and by the way, I also still do not think putting it in a revolving fund is appropriate. It's a reimbursement, it should go to the general fund of the city. I don't agree with this one. I'm sorry, I just had to raise my hand and say.
Ms. Boden Henninger.
So, I respect that, and I agree with you 100%. We in Marlboro are incredibly well-funded and well-supported by our council and mayor. That is absolutely not the case in the majority of municipalities in this state. Many, many, we, you know, I think you and I have discussed that we, we go to meetings with our colleagues from other cities and towns, and we're oftentimes, don't say anything in conversations.
Come back and keep your motion.
Because we are almost embarrassed, because the problems around funding for education that most municipalities deal with, we don't have those problems here. And, you know, it's something, it's a source of pride, but when you are subjected to conversations with people from other parts of the state, we, we, we don't participate in those conversations. So these resolutions are intended to be statewide focused. They're not supposed to be individual cities and town focused. So, I mean, we can still vote against it, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't, I, I, I understand your point 100%, and, and I don't have a problem with that stance, but for the benefit of other communities that really could use that added, for, for the public that doesn't understand this, there, for some services that are rendered to students under special education in particular that are of a medical nature, the city is able, the school district is able to recoup payment for those medical services for students whose health insurance is Mass Health. So that the, the services are being provided in the schools for those children, and as the superintendent stated, then later on, that money is, comes back to the city in arrears. That money does not come back to the schools, even though the work and the services that were provided were done within the schools. The money comes back to the general fund of the city. And for cities, for school districts that don't get as high net school spend, don't get as much money from their communities, this would, this is a way that they can help to support the work that they're doing in the schools by getting reimbursed for that work. So that's what this is all about.
Just keep in mind, this money's been washed out by the federal government over the last eight, 10 years, so.
It's on the radar.
It's a fraction of what we were getting, it's not worth the fight. Mrs. Matthews?
Can I ask clarifying, excuse me, a clarifying question on the reimbursement? I don't know if Mr. Diaz or the superintendent can answer this, but one is that municipal, when we talk about municipalities and the filing of it and where the money goes, obviously in a town situation, there's the allocation that comes back to a town and their, what word I'm looking for, their, their budget is voted upon by the, all the, at the town meeting, where with the cities are, in both cases, they have to apply for the reimbursement, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. You have to apply for the reimbursement, that is correct.
Okay, so if there is no one applying, where in many cases there might not be somebody to actually administer the.
Everybody applies, right, Jody? Everybody applies, it's a, it's a partial, it's a job of the school district. Somebody within the school district does that, right?
I, I don't believe everyone applies. I believe the majority apply, but there are some that just like feeble reimbursement.
So, so the money's going somewhere or nowhere. And, and I guess my question, the what, the clarification that I'm seeking here is also, it says that MASC urges the general court to require 100% of the Medicaid reimbursements to cities and towns, and I'm just trying to figure out where the court comes into this whole thing.
I think what they're asking.
There asses.
Thank you, I think what they're asking for, Ms. Matthews, is they're asking for the law to change.
Okay.
Because what happens now is you could not apply it to a, a revolving account, because it's not one of the accepted revenues that could go into a revolving account. So what they're asking for is they're asking for legislative relief, that's how I'm reading this.
Okay, so in, if it were, if it were to be established to a revolving account, then technically, it wouldn't go back to the general fund of the city, it would come back to the schools in a city situation, but, okay, I got it. So.
Is there a motion? No motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gary is absent, Ms. Hennessy.
No.
This is Ryan.
No.
This is Boden Henninger.
Yes.
This is Matthews.
No.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the chair votes no, it does not pass, we don't support it. Resolution number seven.
Seven, sorry, I gotta find it. Oh, there we go. Attempts by US DOE to direct funding to private schools. I think I'll read the first whereas, because it explains it. Whereas a recent advisory issued by the US Secretary of Education has inappropriately interpreted language in the recent enacted COVID-19 relief legislation to benefit private schools disproportionately in the distribution of federal funding for economically disadvantaged students. Therefore, to be, be it resolved that MASC petition the Attorney General of Massachusetts to review and recommend to the Executive Office of Education and the Mass Department of Elementary Education to review the formal language of such statutes that determine the distribution of federal funds to benefit economically disadvantaged students, and further that the Attorney General provide legal guidance to state agencies in Massachusetts to implement such formulas based on the actual language and legislative intent of the statute, should that be in variance with any advisory issued by the US Secretary of Education.
Ms. Hennessy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gary's absent, Ms. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
This is Boden Henninger.
Yes.
This is Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the chair abstains, it is approved. Number eight.
Membership of a school committee member on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is an annual resolution. Whereas the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education is established to oversee and implement policy related to public education, therefore be it resolved that MASC submit to the general court proposed legislation that MGL Chapter 15, Section 1E be revised as follows. 1E, there shall be in the Department of, a Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in this chapter called the Board, which shall consist of the Chairman of the Student Advisory Council, established under this section the Secretary of Education, in this chapter called the Secretary or her designee, and nine members appointed by the Governor. The nine members appointed by the Governor shall consist of one representative of a labor organization selected by the Governor from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts State Labor Council, AFL-CIO, one representative of business or industry selected by the Governor with a demonstrated commitment to education, one representative of parents of schoolchildren selected by the Governor from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts Parent Teachers Association, and they are line adding one representative from a school committee from a list of three nominees provided by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and five additional members.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve, any further discussion?
I'll just clarify.
Yep.
I, I just wanted to double check, so I, I asked Glenn Kuchar about this. So all of the other ones that are in that list currently are on the Board. So the Board, the Board of Education has a parent on it, has a teacher on it, and has whatever they, oh, whatever the third person on, is on it. Oh, a business, a business person on it, but there's no school committee member on it, and that's what this is.
Yes, we have voted on this resolution before.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gary's absent, Ms. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boden Henninger.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the chair votes, uh, abstains, it is approved. Number nine.
Providing equity for sexual orientation LGBTQ plus students, teachers, and staff. Whereas gender identity is not listed as a protected class in federal laws, therefore be it resolved that MASC file legislation and petition our federal legislative delegation to also file legislation which would have the effect of adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the list of protected classes in order to provide equity and support to our LGBTQ plus students, teachers, and staff, excuse me, and petition our legislative delegation.
Ms. Hennessy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gary's absent, Ms. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
This is Boden Henninger.
Yes.
This is Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the chair abstains, it is approved. Number 10.
Relative to the monitoring of attendance of students during the pandemic. Therefore, be it resolved that MASC advocate for legislation and regulation that protect the rights of parents to withhold their children from school for reasons of their health status or health risk, and further that MASC advocate for regulations that hold districts accountable for the attendance of students, provide appropriate exemptions for students to experience or require extended absences from school due to health-related issues or concerns due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and further that MASC petition the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to waive all accountability requirements regarding attendance for the 2021 school year, and that such regulations exempt districts from sanction status on the basis of attendance when such absences are related to a public health crisis, including COVID-19.
Motion made and seconded, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gary's absent, Ms. Hennessy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boden Henninger.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the chair abstains, it is approved.
Woo, yay team!
Great job.
Thank you.
Got through another set of resolutions.
Marlboro Educators Association, Para-educators Administrators Association agreements. Would they be, would it be appropriate to take these together? Is there any?
I, I think you could take them together, I don't see any issue with that.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve all of the agreements before us tonight.
Motion made and seconded to approve the MEA Nurse Extension, MEA School Year Plan, MEA Educator Evaluation Plan, Para-education Retirement Incentive, Para-educator Health Hildress Childcare, and Administrator Association School Year Plan. Any discussion on that? Mr. Caruso?
I just have one question about the very first one, the extension. I'm a little confused by that.
Sure.
Could you explain exactly what it is?
Sure, so in the, in the spring, when we were first dealing with the outbreak of COVID and trying to work with the city to provide help to the Marlboro Board of Health, we have a memorandum of agreement that we signed with the MEA regarding our school nurses and how they would be working with the Board of Health. I, I did ask for an extension of this agreement only because we do not know from day to day whether we will need to provide additional support, and also I wanted to make sure that we were still recognizing the efforts above and beyond by any nurses who are doing contact tracing outside of the workday hours. So I, I did ask for an, excuse me, bug in my throat, I did ask for an extension of this agreement through this year, because frankly, we don't know if we're going to need to jump into this, and I didn't want to have to redo it all over again, I'd rather just do an extension for the period of time. When we first had actually negotiated this, we did not know the extent of the closure. And at that point, you know, I think we were still in the mindset that we would be going back to school during that timeframe. So, sorry, I probably went on too long, but it's, it's, part, part of it was to reflect and make sure that the nurses who were doing contact tracing outside of the workday be paid at an appropriate hourly rate.
Well, I, I kind of thought that's what it was, but since, I didn't see the copy of which was attached, wasn't attached, so I wasn't sure, that's why I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gary's absent, Ms. Hennessy.
Yes.
This is Ryan.
Yes.
This is Boden Henninger.
Yes.
This is Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the chair is in the affirmative, it is approved. Policy removal, policy 8.013, administration of medicine.
Thank you very much, so unfortunately, in our moving forward very quickly with a lot of different policies, this was one that was supposed to be removed because we put a new one in place and put it in a different numbering. So what we did was administering of medicines moved to 8.003, and it was newly written up, and so we did approve that.
We already approved it.
Yes, so we needed to remove this one off the books, and unfortunately, it just happened that it didn't get on to the list. that it didn't get on to the listing last time, and I caught it when Ms. Sibilio and I were working back and forth on getting everything updated onto the website. So, I'd like to make a motion for removal of eight point zero one three, administration of medicines.
Motion made and seconded to remove eight point oh one three. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gary's absent. Mr. Tennessee?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowden-Henja?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the chair is voting yes. It is approved. Thank you very much. Uh, donations and gifts, anonymous, ten thousand mass, three thousand dollar value.
Move to approve with gratitude from this anonymous being.
Want to thank him very, very much.
Him, ooh!
I want to thank the donor very, very, very much. Uh, um, I'll just keep reading if that's okay.
You'll do all of them?
Yeah. As we're cutting awards, Whitcomb, eighth grade student, one hundred twenty-five dollars. FY twenty-one, Mass Dessies, FC one oh two, what is this? Reopening grant program, MPS, one million seventy-five thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. That's a new one.
That is a new one.
Uh, FY twenty-one, Mass Dessies, FC two forty idea, MPS, one million four hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars. FY twenty-one, Mass Dessies, FC two sixty-two, early childhood ECC, sixty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. FY twenty-one, Mass Dessies, FC four sixty, college grant, MHS, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Mass Dessies, FY twenty-one, Title One Grant, MPS, nine hundred eleven thousand, ten dollars. Mass Dessies, FY twenty-one, Title One Grant, MPS, one hundred and fifty-four thousand fifty-three dollars. Mass Dessies, FY twenty-one, Title One, um, MPS, one hundred ninety-two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. Mass Dessies, FY twenty-one, Title One, MPS, sixty-six thousand eighteen dollars. Palette Book Buyback Program, Kane School, one hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. Hanniford Supermarket, Kane School, four hundred and two dollars, MHS, two thousand two hundred and six dollars. There's been a motion made and seconded to approve them all. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gary is absent. Mrs. Tennessee?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowden-Henja?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it is approved. Reports of subcommittees, Mrs. Tennessee?
Uh, thank you very much. On October eighth, the policy subcommittee meeting, uh, or subcommittee group, um, had a meeting. Um, we are continuing to push forward on a number of different policies. We are working specifically on, um, Chapter Six right now, um, and I will be scheduling a new meeting so that we can continue to keep on, um, updating. It's a, a lot of HR kind of policies, so we're trying to keep them all somewhat together to bring them forward at that time. Um, but we've done a lot of work and have more to do, but we're, we're getting through it, folks. We're gonna get it all updated, so.
Good job.
See it soon.
Thank you. Anyone else? Members forum. Mrs. Tennessee?
Thank you. Um, so, I think it goes without saying, with our conversation that we had earlier, but if there are people in the community that are still watching tonight, I guess I would just continue to urge you that, um, we all need to be doing this together. I know the superintendent would not have brought this forward tonight if he didn't feel like it was for the benefit for the health and safety of our students and our staff. Um, I think as we had our meetings all summer long, uh, in preparation, um, yes, we're here for education, but the health and safety was really paramount on making a lot of these decisions. And while this is a tough decision tonight, my hope is that we're gonna, um, be able to work together so that our numbers can decrease and we can make a change, but it takes every single one of you all out there to hold each other accountable to make it happen. So, um, I hope each of you think about it and make the right decisions on saying to your friend, if they take off their mask and they're near you and they haven't been, tell them to put it back on, and remind each other about washing your hands and sanitizing, because it's gonna take all of us doing it to bring down our numbers. So, thank you.
Any other members?
I, I just have a. I have a question about flu shots. Are we administering flu shots when, how?
The Board of Health, um, had a drive-through flu shot clinic on Saturday. I believe they're having another drive-through flu clinic. I believe it's next Saturday as well, and I, I think if I remember from, uh, Mr. Garci's comments, say they did over two hundred and seventy-five, uh, shots during that clinic. Um, we are looking at options to do some in school right now, but with our decision tonight, we need to probably, um, hold off on that for the time being.
And is, are, are families are being alerted of this through?
Through, uh.
How, how are people?
Process, it's been on the website, it's been announced, you know, we've had it out there.
I've just had two people ask me about it.
Yeah, no, we've, uh, I, I asked them to go on, on our website, and there's more information on there, but we just had a public one the other day. We're using actually some of the school nurses again, and it was hugely successful. We're doing one at the Senior Center for Seniors. We're doing the city employees, so we're just gonna keep going, you know.
Okay, so if people are looking to find out where they can get their flu shots, go to the city website?
Yeah, Health Department website, yeah.
Health Department website.
And there's a link to it right on the front of our website.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Matthews?
I have reviewed the warrant, and I will be signing it tomorrow.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that.
Move to, uh, adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn.
I was gonna say approve, I know it was wrong.
And Mr. Gary's absent. Mrs. Tennessee?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowden-Henja?
Yes.
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.